Welcome, everyone, to the Fiscal 2024 Annual Town Meeting for the Town of Berry. As is our custom, I'm going to start with some moderators' motions. These are on the very first page of your booklet at the bottom. The first motion that the meeting dispense with the reading of the warrant, the constable's return of service of that warrant, and that the moderator not be required to read warrant articles verbatim, but may refer to them by number and/or subject matter. Second, that the moderator may extend the floor to town management and staff and other non-voters, provided they must first be recognized by the moderator. And third, that the moderator pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 15, be allowed to declare a two-thirds vote rather than taking a standing count. Hearing no objections to those motions. Unanimous consent is declared. Before we get started, there are a couple of changes to the book. So if you can find Article 9. It's the omnibus budget article. And there are two changes to make here. On the fiscal year 2024 column, the right column, the line item for town clerk, just kind of halfway down the first box there. That should be 165, 659.78. All right, so it's going from 162 to 165. And then that changes the bottom line on the next page to, again, the right column, 6,624,566.89. So that's one change to the booklet. Everybody get that? Anyone need me to repeat anything? The other change to the booklet is 23. So Article 23, which is like three or four pages from the end. No, really just two pages from the end. This is the capital stabilization fund. And the number that's going in there is going to be a little bit lower. So instead of 206, it's going to be 201, 185.07. Okay? Anyone got all that? Great. So as those of you who have been here for the past few town meetings are probably aware, I like to use what's called a consent agenda. The purpose of the consent agenda is to save a lot of time by not having to have a lot of different people get up to the microphone to make a bunch of different motions and a bunch of different votes when chances are you're all just going to approve those votes anyway because it's just the regular business of the town. But I don't want anyone to feel like I'm taking away their chance to have their say about any one of these articles. All right? So we're going to practice. I'm going to read the motion for Article 1. And one of you is going to yell "Hold." Article 1, "With all other town officers, agents, and committees not elected by ballot, having already been appointed, I move to pass over Article 1." Someone yelled "Hold." So that doesn't go on the consent agenda. And someone's going to make that motion, and we're going to be able to debate it, and you can amend it, and so on and so forth. You get it? So that's why we do that. Thanks, Sam. Okay. That was just practice, though. We're going to do this for real now. I have a lot of articles on our consent agenda. I want you to feel free to yell "Hold" for any of them that you really think we can't just bundle together. We really ought to talk about them separately, all right? Everyone on board? Okay. So here's our consent agenda. Article 1. Oh, and by the way, you're going to notice the words I say might be slightly different than the words in your book. So listen to the words I say. Those are the ones that count. Sometimes the wording had to be changed a little bit at the last minute after the books had already been printed. So, "With all other town officers, agents, and committees not elected by ballot, having already been appointed, I move to pass over Article 1." We don't need seconds. The second article on the consent agenda is Article 2. "I move that the town accept the reports of the Select Board, Finance Committee, School Committee, and any other department or committee as printed in the 2022 annual report." The next item on the consent agenda is Article 3. "I move to pass over Article 3." The next item is Article 4. "I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $1,914.91 to be added to the FY23 town clerk salary." That's a budget transfer. The next article is 5. "I move the town transfer from free cash the sum of $74,125 to the FY23 snow and ice removal account to fund the over expenditure of expenses used for the current fiscal year snow and ice removal." The next article on the consent agenda is Article 6. "I move the town appropriate from water receipts the sum of $702,810.96 for the Water Enterprise Fund to be funded from the following sources." And I guess I'll read these. Water receipts: $665,435. Retained earnings: $37,375. For a total of $702,810. And expenses salaries: $189,372. Commissioner's stipends: $900. Expenses: $276,000. Water replacement: $6,250. Water upgrades: $70,000. Indirect costs: $160,288. For a total of $702,810. The next item on the consent agenda is Article 7. The Sewer Enterprise Budget. "I move the town appropriate from sewer receipts the sum of $970,261 for the Sewer Enterprise Fund to be funded from the following sources." Sewer receipts: $929,861. Retained earnings: $40,400. With expenses of salaries: $254,549. Commissioner's stipends: $900. Expenses: $486,875. And indirect costs: $227,937. For a total of $970,261. There's a "Hold" on Number 7. It's okay. We'll deal with it after the consent agenda. So... The next item on the consent agenda is Number 8. "I move that we pass over Article 8." The next item on the consent agenda is Article 9. The Omnibus Budget. We have a "Hold" on Article 9. The next item on the consent agenda is Article 10. The Omnibus Budget for Schools. Did I hear a "Hold"? I hear a "Hold"? The next item on the consent agenda is Article Number 11, the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund. "I move the town transfer the sum of $25,000 from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund to the Public Educational Governmental Access and Cable Related Fund for FY24 operations." Didn't see that one coming. The next item on the consent agenda would be Article 12, the Revolving Funds. "I move that the town establish spending limits for revolving accounts established pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53E 1/2, and the town bylaws, Chapter 48, Section 1, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, as follows." You have these printed in your booklet. I'm not going to read all the words. I'll just go through the amounts. For the library: $2,000. For the Board of Health: $11,000. Electrical inspector: $50,000. Plumbing inspector: $7,000. Gas: $4,000. Police: $10,000. Oh, sorry. Yeah. Well, there's three police items. One is $10,000, one is $70,000, and one is $16,000. There's a fire department item at $3,000, and a council on aging item at $2,000. The next item that would be on the consent agenda is Article 13, the Chapter 90 Grant. "I move that the town accept any and all state highway assistance funds authorized by the state legislature and approved by Mass. Department of Transportation, Highway Division, under the so-called Chapter 90 Highway Assistance Program, to be extended for the maintenance, repair, and construction of town roads in anticipation of reimbursement under the direction of the Select Board for work on roads located on the state aid primary system as approved by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Highway Division, and further to authorize the Treasury or Collector with the approval of the Select Board to borrow money from time to time during fiscal year '24 up to the reimbursable amount for the period from July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024 in anticipation of reimbursement of said highway assistance in conformity with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 6A." Now we're going to skip ahead. The next item for the consent agenda would be Article 19. "This is to replace the chiller at the middle high school. I move the town vote to authorize the sum of $387,344 to pay for the cost of replacing the chiller, a component of the HVAC system at the Quack..." There's a "Hold" on that. The next item would be Article 20. "I move that the town transfer the sum of $15,000 from free cash to provide for recodification of the town code." Did someone have a question about that? Then that's a "Hold." Next is Article 21. "I move that the town transfer the sum of $25,000 from free cash to the town's OPEB account in accordance with the recommendation of the auditor." Next is Article 22. "I move that the town transfer the sum of $25,000 from free cash to the town's stabilization account." Next up would be motion for Article 23. And listen to this number carefully because it was changed. "I move the town transfer the sum of $201,185.07 from free cash to the town's capital plan stabilization account." Skipping ahead again. The next item for the consent agenda would be Number 26. It's about a private cemetery. It's a motion, "I move the town vote to approve the location of a private cemetery at 33 Hardy Road as recommended and approved by the Board of Health on November 13, 2017." And finally, the last item for the consent agenda is Article 27. "I move the town vote to authorize the Board of Assessors to appoint one of its members to a paid part-time position under their supervision as allowed by Mass. General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 21A." Okay. So I just made a whole bunch of motions. Ignore the ones that were held. We'll come back to those, and we can talk about them. You can ask questions and so on and so forth. Without debate... Actually, can I get a second on my consent agenda? I have a second on my consent agenda. Without debate, can I have a vote of all those in favor of approving those items from the consent agenda? Say "aye," please. All those opposed? It carries unanimously. Thank you very much. You just saved us a whole lot of time. So... Rolling back to Number 7. Do we know who's making this motion? This is a sewer enterprise budget? And that microphone probably needs to be switched on. It's underneath.
Mr. Moderator.
Okay, that does sound fair.
Hello? How's that? Mr. Moderator, I move the town appropriate from sewer receipts the sum of $970,261.70 for the Sewer Enterprise Fund to be funded from the following sources. $929,861.70 from sewer receipts, $40,400 from retained earnings.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion of this motion? Thank you. When you come up to comment, again, speak loudly into the microphone, identify who you are, and then state your question.
Hello? I'm Mike Coller. I live at 330 Springfield Road. I just have a question. The receipts are going up 20% practically, and then the expenses are going to follow the receipts. So I just want to understand how we think the receipts are going to go up 20% in one year?
So the question is, how did the receipts go up 20% in one year?
We had a rate increase for the rates. That's it. I'm not sure exactly where they got that number from. So if it doesn't go up 20%, does that mean the expenses don't go up 20%?
Can you respond?
The expenses will be what it says on the paper. So we don't have a shortfall that if it doesn't go up 20%? You just said the expenses are going to be the same as the paper. That is an enterprise fund account, so there's money in there to cover any extra expenses.
Can you step up to the microphone, please?
So I understand this. I don't mean to be a problem, but it doesn't matter what the receipts are. The expenses are going to be the expenses, isn't what you're saying? Yes, they're projected expenses, correct? It doesn't matter what the receipts are. They just have to be the same.
All right. Any other questions or comments on Article 7? All those in favor of the motion, please say "aye." All those opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. That takes us to Article Number 9. Do I have a motion on Article Number 9? Dr. Marshall, thank you.
I move the town fix salaries and compensation of all elected officials for the town for the fiscal year 2024 for the period of July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024, and further to raise and appropriate funds $520,000 of ambulance receipts reserve and transfer $60,760 from free cash as identified in the town's omnibus budget as follows. And that information is included as part... You don't want me to read all of it?
No, you don't need to read those.
There was one change that precipitated a bottom-line change
I have a motion and a second. I believe there was a question about... Yep? Please identify yourself.
My name is Matt Urban, Williamsville Road. In the motion, the transfer of $60,760 from free cash would seem like it wouldn't line up with the change of the amount of free cash you're putting into your capitalization. So I think that number does need to be changed to catch up to all the other numbers.
That's correct. You misspoke. So the free cash number should have been $64,113.76. What's that? Oh, you just want the number? Are there any other questions regarding... Yes, please.
Mike Coller. I just have a question.
Can you speak right down into the mic?
You guys heard it? Yeah, I have a question. A question regarding the ambulance budget. I was at the meeting you guys had a couple weeks ago, and we said that the ambulance, that group was costing about a couple hundred thousand dollars. But it's just got my attention that alcohol is that neutral. It doesn't cost the town anything. So I kind of want to understand why ours still costs us $200,000 in overhead and not all those after the receipts.
So the question is, why is our ambulance costing us more to run than we bring in in receipts? Does anybody have the answer to that question? Do you have a follow-up?
I do, too. I know that we get money from the town that's like hard work, which is $35,000. I'm just wondering, how much does it cost a man at ambulance? And what portion of the back are they paying?
Do we have the answer to that question? Anyone else know the answer to that question? Okay. Any other questions about... Yes? All right. Any other questions regarding the omnibus budget? All right, seeing none. It's a simple majority vote. All those in favor of the omnibus budget as presented with the free cash number corrected to $64,113.76. All those in favor of that motion, please say "aye." All those opposed, please say "nay." The motion carries. We're moving on to Article 10, the town. This is the omnibus budget for schools. We have a motion.
Mr. Moderator, if I move the town to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,878,718.67 to pay for schools as identified in the town's recommended omnibus budget relative to education as follows for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2023. Quavon Regional School District, Monty Tech, And Quavon Regional School and Dent Service,
I have a motion and a second. I'm going to refer to you, by the way, if you look at the book, the Finance Committee and Select Board recommendations are in there. You're not going to ask them to tell us. Favorable or unfavorable. Are there any questions about the school budget? Yes, Mr. Urban, please, cross the mic.
I'm just curious about the Quavon School District. Recommended and requested numbers are actually approximately $4,000 less than what is being put on the floor for the motion. If you look at the table above, they are not the same numbers. Or is that... I misunderstood.
Yeah. Yeah, the motion gives a total draw for all. Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions about the omnibus budget for schools? I see a question. Yes, please.
Hi, Mike Coller again. I was just wondering, I know that the population at the school is going down tremendously since 2006. In fact, right now, it's at the 2018 levels. It's projected to go down for '23, '24. But our budget still comes up. This is 50% of the town budget. For me, that's a lot of money. I don't know if this is true, guys. But that's 50% of what I pay. That's $3,100 for me to pay for the school system that keeps going up. And I'm just kind of tired, I have to be honest with you. But I don't understand, somebody can answer my question as this. If the population of the school is going down, and we have records that say it's going down, then why are the funds to run the school going up?
Do we have an answer to that question?
Yes, I can brief the summary of the moment if you'd like. But if you're the adults and have a superintendent, school teacher, and a business manager, can also elaborate as well. Would you be willing to allow the superintendent to...
Oh, yeah, I'll read it.
The population has declined over a period of a number of years. The challenge with the school budget is as we lose students, we don't lose large numbers of students from the same place at the same time. So most of our budget is established for school personnel. So I'll just give you a brief example. We lost 25 students, resident students, this year. Those 25 students are... Those twenty-five students are from various places across the school district. We have five elementary schools, as you know, and one middle high school. Two students may have been from one classroom, but more likely, two students were from one school. That doesn't allow us to make any significant cuts. And we still have to heat the building. We still have to provide all of the services to the students. Um, the only time we can cut, major, ma- major cuts due to declining enrollment is when we have large numbers of students in one period of time that are all sort of in the same place at the same time, we might be able to cut staff revenue. Um, just like your budget at home, I'm sure you realize that the cost for operating our schools increases over time. Our heating oil continues to increase. Um, the cost of salaries increases. So all of these things, it continues to increase despite declining enrollment. Over the years, we have lost, over the last twenty years, we have lost homes, mouths, and students in the school district. Over that period of twenty years, we have cut many positions, but not, you know, not one year, by one year. It's been over a period of time, and the number of job positions in the district has declined.
Are there any other questions regarding the omnibus budget for schools? Yes, sir.
Mike Collier again. I understand they sent me up, but like you said, it went down by eleven hundred people or kids in the last, since 2006. They're projected to go down there for next year. And out of the whole budget spend, I just find it hard to believe that we can't find something to cut. If, if you're in the business and you lose that much percent of your revenue, you have to cut expenses. But as a, as a citizen in this town, we're being asked, it's not, I don't know what your hopes are, to pay more and more for a school system that gets less and less kids. I think we need to locate a budget, and we need to make changes because that's what we have to do as individuals, and that's what we have to do as businesses if our, our revenues went down that much. And I know there's other, there's other organizations in this town that depend on how much volume they get. Depends on how much money they get from their budget. We should probably do the same for the schools.
Are there any other questions or comments?
My name is Steve Snyder from Hurstville Road. I went on my child's school field trip this past Friday, and her teacher has, I think, twenty-seven kids in her classroom. And if I'm paying three thousand dollars here for an education here, would I be quick my kid out, go spend fifty, seventy thousand dollars for private school? I would gladly take that. And after paying out the twenty-seven second graders, I would definitely say they're not paying enough.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments regarding the omnibus budget for schools? Seeing none, this is going to a vote. This thing's a simple majority. All those in favor of the school budget as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The motion carries. Yes, sir, please stand and go to the microphone.
Thank you. I'm Mark Murphy, Attorney General of State. I raised an ask for a personal project. I just wanted to publicly recognize Dr. Sheila Newhart. She is retiring June thirtieth of this year. She has worked in the district for over thirty years, and has been a teacher, and has been an administrator, and has been a superintendent of school for the past five years. Not only has she been a leader, a curriculum, and leading, uh, perspective, not only coming in with strategic plans, the G I S evaluations, but as a person who's lived here for many, many years, and also graduated from planning regional schools. Uh, I wanted to say thank you publicly for Dr. Sheila Newhart, her leadership, her dedication, and welcome her to her next endeavor to retire, and what she may do next. So I hope the town recognizes and all of us that will say thank you, and give her, if possible, a round of applause.
Moving on to Article eleven, the Access and Cable Related Fund. Do I have a motion?
I move the town to transfer the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars from the K Access and Cable Access Fund to the public of education and government to access and
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion of Article eleven? Sir.
Matt Urban, Williamsville Road. At the public hearing, when we were talking about budgets, one of the questions that came up to my point of view is if the Finance Committee received any cost estimates or the effort necessary to video tape public meetings that went into a bylaw technically when it affect, uh, about a year and a half ago, but hasn't been served yet. Um, the response I got was, pay access funds is the approach that we're going to try to use to fund that. My question is, is the twenty-five thousand any determined that we've appropriated over the last year or so? And if not, why didn't we not increase that to cover the potential cost that it may take to do this right?
Thank you. Does anyone know the answer to that question?
I understand no effort to put any additional paperwork into the processes of putting. So I say it must continue to be every meeting itself in the community. We know that there is some resistance to making numerous areas, we're getting, uh, televised, uh, departments for everyone. And even after having conversations with the technology team that works with the town on a contract basis. There are places we have looked at to gear up for putting together the permit that's necessary. But good frankly, Kevin made much progress on that. Uh, I could give you some excuses for that, there's not a lot of excuses for that. It's just that we have not focused on exactly where we want to hold public meetings because there are departments who feel that holding the meetings in their own space is more effective and more helpful, and thus not necessarily to those places themselves to bring the kind of technology in there. So I'm, I'm not giving you the excuses, although we continue to have discussions about it. We continue to think about what are the best approaches. And hopefully, we can make more progress this year than we made the past. I accept the criticism, and I understand that it would be nice to get this done. And we continue to work with, obviously, Spectrum and China, that I called this week, trying to expand internet services to those individuals who still are not service to that particular area. Anyway, um, we have a lot of work to do with cable access for various parts of the community. We have a lot to do with access to the community for having on, okay, live video and audio for adult meets. We have to have places, venues to support the technology we need to replace. So Matt, I'm reading it up, he worked me on, and I'm shooting a question here.
Does she have a follow-up?
Yes. This bylaw was passed in 2021. It was requested not to have to be enacted until April of 2022, so they had time to develop a plan to accomplish this. At the time, the bylaw was officially presented on the town floor to cover six board commissioners committees. That was revised on the floor to cover every board committee and commission that we have, which has put help aside for each apparently. We are now in June 2023 with no plan, no cost estimate, and no attempt to even put funds aside, so we could address this this one year. So my question is, under what fiscal year do you plan to actually follow the bylaw put on by town?
Obviously, um, we pushed, we had a green estimate, we have it back. We continue to work with shifts around, even in the individual sector currently. We have a full-time town administrator. We have had changes in that particular area of our work. We have just some changes in the, so, so obviously, there's always transition issues there. We can't make excuses though. That's right, we should have had it done. And we don't have it done. And I take obviously one-third of responsibility for that. It is what it is. We need to move forward on it. I can hear Amy, Amy's voice, I appreciate it. What it is, I can't make up stuff, I can't lie about it. We haven't done it. I'm hopeful that it will be on a higher list for residents, residents who need to work.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund? Does anyone?
Captain in Midsummer Street. This five hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, can any of that be used toward it? Okay, thank you.
The answer is yes.
The answer was yes. Any other questions? Yes.
Jim Freeland, O'Cam Road. Are even the six original ones that were discussed now on cable access?
No.
I don't think any of these were dislocated. It was just how it was three years ago.
Select Board.
Uh, please don't respond that way. So the question is, are any of the other boards being televised besides the Select Board?
Right, and I was at the town meeting where they asked for six, and the Select Board itself said, oh, no, it shouldn't be all of them. So I'm curious, do we even have any for it?
Okay. Does anyone know the answer to that question?
We take your.
The Select Board, Budget and Finance Committee, and the school district, all of those meetings are televised. But that is all of this is time. I, I really encourage some of you to, to attend some of the meetings that are held. They're held in areas that are not conducive to providing the kind of coverage that you see at the Select Board meeting. And we need to have more studio access in, to be able to do the job right. Um, hopefully, we'll get some of that done before we see them again.
Can you return the microphone to the stand? And can we all give Ms. Brown a, a round of applause for saving our, yes? Thank you. Any other discussion of Article eleven regarding PEG Access and Cable Related Funds? Uh, Mr. Urban, did you see something different?
I believe so.
Okay.
I just wanted to mention that, actually, when I first got on the Select Board in 2015, we had individuals recording meetings, we had T P W Commission regularly recorded and on TV. We had multiple meetings, or health was regularly recorded in the Selectments Meeting Room and put on TV. So my question is, when we were able to do it before COVID, I find it difficult that we don't act through it now. And we have five hundred and some thousand, and we're not even setting aside money to see if we can pay someone to record the meetings like we used to?
Mr. Urban, do, do you want to make an amendment?
Not if they don't have plans for it, but it's not useful. It will be up to them if they can, they can do that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We dealt with twelve and thirteen in the consent agenda, so that brings us to Article fourteen, which lays in as our omnibus budget. Do I have a motion?
I believe you can see in Article fourteen, the motion to move the town amendment, the town code, the town carry by establishing a bylaw for the position of town administrator, and to insert the same in the town code as the new chapter seventy as far as. Uh, I don't suspect you're likely to read that, Wester.
I, I don't think that's necessary. Everybody asked the book, and it was certainly advertised around in advance in various ways. Um, let me ask the meeting, do you feel like you need some time to look this over? In your books?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm hearing some people want some time. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to give everybody a couple minutes to look it over. If you see anything in there you have questions about, raise your hand, and we'll interrupt our, our reading time here, and we can ask the questions. Okay, take your, mark your. Are there any questions regarding this motion? Yes, sir.
Jim Freeman, O'Cam Road. I'm wondering if the bump in, twenty-four percent bump in salary for the town administrator position, is that in anticipation of this article being passed?
Do you have an answer to that question?
Yes, it is.
Any other questions?
Hi, great morning. Um, just a couple questions. One is, why is this position needed versus where they are right now? And then, why not just have another elected position instead of just a elected salary?
Do you have an answer to that?
The Town of Barry has had a full-time town administrator now for probably half my lifetime. So, I would like to admit. Um, so this is not a new position. This is a position that we have had in the past. And currently, we have a hot tone about town administrator who's interim. In other words, that we have the resignation of a previous administrator, which was on people firm. We now have an interim, as we will begin a search for an only person to act in the position of town administrator. What we wanted to do in this particular article was to clarify specifically the position. There's a lot of repeat stuff that would have been in the code for any previous town administrator, but what we've tried to do is to strengthen the specifics of the job so people that we are interested in could demonstrate their expertise and capacity to fill the position. Uh, it is our first step in moving forward to replace this very important position.
Uh, that was one of the questions. The other question was, why is the town administrator not an elected position?
I'm sure that town, um, probably return, you could say why it's not an elected position. It's just not an elected position in our community. I do not know of any community where it is an elected position. The term is indicating, he doesn't know any either. So, I guess it is just nothing that has ever been done, and legally it may not be appropriate.
Thank you. Any other question?
Rich, Rich Ronsti from Williams Road. I'm sure for answering part of my question. I'd like to hear from the finance committee, or the reason for that favorable, that favorable decision for this article. So if I could summarize.
Thank you.
This is the moderator, Dan Jordan, thirty-four Wits Road, and the chair of the finance committee. Finance committee ordered favorable for this article to be approved by law, uh, in part to try to keep a town administrator here with the towns because they have a clearer definition of what they need to do for their job. The increase, uh, twenty-four percent increase puts us in line with surrounding towns. The town of Hubbardston last year just hired their town administrator at a similar start rate at Rarback of a hundred and three thousand dollars that are proven. And this is to keep someone here that's going to be with the town for more than two or three years than to go through this transition. And another interim administrator is coming, they're gonna hire another administrator. The town's been doing, cycling through administrators now for at least ten years. And hopefully, that this bylaw and increase in salary will provide the town with some consistency across the board and be able to have a town administrator that can stay here for the long term and truly administer for the time of the day.
Thank you. Did you have a question?
Daniel from Longwood Road. My question is, are any of the powers and duties that are listed in this article currently previously controlled by the board of selectmen? And if so, what is the desire to shift that control from the board to one specific person?
Do we get an answer to that question?
By law, there's a structure. And it's structured not only by the select board, but also by interim town administrator with four years of experience in this job. But also, there's a particular, um, job document. And we have a number of questions. It doesn't, does it shift too much authority away from the board of selectmen and give it to this individual? We do not believe so. We believe in the past that we have asked the town administrator to show the great responsibility, to hold up the authority to do the job. And that has been one of the problems. In our exit interview, when we've talked with people, why did you leave? Was it just money? Sometimes it was just money. Other times, it was really the lack of structural in our job description and the fact that departments didn't really understand what their role was in relationship to the town administrator and vice versa. You know, of course, when we say that's fierce, right? And that you are losing your power and authority as board. I would tell you that as a board of selectmen, we too have tremendous amounts of responsibility and limited amounts of authority. And that's why the job is at times frustrating. Um, we believe that putting down in writing the responsibilities of this individual and understanding that not giving someone the authority to carry out his or her responsibilities is faulty.
Do you have a follow-up?
My only follow-up would be to caution the town to consider what powers and duties are listed and consider that, um, those powers and duties should be controlled by an elected board and majority of people over one person who is appointed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, going along with that, this position is given a substantial amount of power. And even on removal, it says after probation period, which is six months. So, six months, you can let this person go for whatever reason. But after that, they should not be dismissed to separate efficiency, capacity, conductive, unbecoming of the office, heads for a nation, one of the cause. In the business world, some of those things are hard to prove. I, I wonder, why is it not like employee at will? Where this position is defined, it seems like they have potential a lot of control. They can potentially go rogue, and it seems like it would be difficult to get this person out. Why cannot they be an employee at will?
Do you have, if the town council might help with that? Now, the resident for the votary Marybank recognized me in the answer to that question.
Uh, good evening, uh, three, Mr. Moderator. Uh, my name is Greg Corbo, town council for the town of Barry. So, under the Massachusetts general laws, Chapter forty-one, Section twenty-three A, um, towns are authorized to, um, empower their board of selectmen to appoint a town administrator for a term of one or up to three years. Um, and so what this bylaw does is it carries out that authority by giving the select board the discretion to choose how long to appoint the town administrator for, up to the maximum period of three years. Um, and to clarify exactly what a town administrator is as compared to the board of selectmen, um, a town administrator is like a manager or an administrative official who is charged with carrying out the policy decisions made by the select board. So, um, the things that the town administrator does are administer the day-to-day operations of the town, um, dealing with employees and other department heads, um, making sure that the proper supplies are purchased, that contracts are executed properly. Um, but all, everything at a higher level, whether or not to enter into a certain contract and purchase a certain supply, that is subject to the authority of the select board. And any policy-level decision is still rest with the select board, and the town administrator has to answer to the select board and does not have any policy-making authority of their own, which is why they are an elected official rather than an elected official.
Thank you. So, do you have a question?
I've heard from William Tilbro. Um, for those that don't know me, um, two years ago, I was a member of the select board for approximately five years prior to that, five and a half years. Um, so I do have some familiarity with the roles of the select board, and town administrator, and how it's sort of giddy up over time. Uh, at least in the recent history, I don't want to speak for all of the history prior to me. Um, I have a couple items here I would like to speak to on that. Just to clarify, uh, I believe the other gentleman asking what type of, uh, how are we potentially changing the town administrator's role with this? One is in Section D, actually, seventy dash two, Section D. The second I'll ask, well, I'll just read it out. Um, he she shall be entrusted with the administration of the town personnel system and personnel policy manual adopted by the board of selectmen, including what not limited to personnel policies and practices, rules and regulations, including provisions for an annual employee performance review, personnel bylaw, and all collective bargaining agreements entered into on behalf of the town. I just want to give a little clarification on what that means. Does that mean they actually do the bargaining on behalf of the town? Because that is not historically how it's been done.
Do you have an answer to that question?
Three, Mr. Moderator. I thought there was something else that helped with collective bargaining. Yeah, under C, he or she shall recommend appointment and may recommend removal subject to civil service, any collective bargaining, if it's recommended. Where's the section? That's Section C. So, seventy dash two C. So, under Section seventy dash two C, the town administrator recommends appointment and may recommend removal subject to civil service and any collective bargaining agreements as may be applicable, all department heads, office, officers, subordinates, et cetera. Appointments made by the town administrator shall become effective unless the board of selectmen by majority vote votes to reject the appointment. He or she shall be entrusted with the administration of a town personnel system, et cetera. So, what this means is that, um, the town administrator at the, um, the day-to-day level is in charge of dealing with employees who are subject to collective bargaining agreements entered into by the board of selectmen and approved in town meeting.
So, just managing the agreement, not ultimately making the agreement on behalf of the board?
The question is, just managing and not actually making the agreement, and the answer was yes. Do you have a follow-up?
Just a couple items. Section K, um, he she shall have full jurisdiction over the rental and use of all town facilities. Um, prior, we have several use of town facility applications that go before the select board. This looks like you are changing that and taking it and giving it directly to the town administrator advantage. And if it's a bylaw, so it wouldn't be something you can change in two months if you change your mind.
Would be contributing that responsibility to the town administrator for, um, common events that have been, we would participate, would be participating perhaps. We would expect that any new, or something that we've not ever had the opportunity to have in our community, would be brought to the select board, obviously, for a new consult for finally. We would, we are obviously working together with this individual. We do not expect this person to, um, help. Take, think of all the selectmen. The selectmen would still have ultimate responsibility in for, for managing the town with the assistance of the particular town administrator. But when someone says, in the fun, uh, game of songs, or whatever the group is that sings at the town hall and has for the last three years, once we use the town hall as empty on a Wednesday, waiting for another select board to give approval seems less than fruitful and sometimes it makes things difficult for people trying to use our facilities. And ended up, you know, getting approval from the chairman of the board of selectmen on the phone. Uh, so we hope to, um, have better, uh, so to say, get our opportunities for people to deal directly with the town administrator and to perform their responsibilities.
Is that true?
I agree with the principle of what you just said, and appreciate that contact. But as the bylaw is written, that's not what you do. You give the full authority to the town administrator, and they can actually refuse the select board from telling them to do different. It is directly written that they have full control and authority for the rental of town facilities. It doesn't give you that subjective view later on. And so I suggest, one of my bigger concerns about this whole bylaw is it is a job description. And once you put it into a bylaw, it takes away that subjectivity, takes away that ability for a select board and a town administrator by a contract or via just progressive, as time moves on, changing your job description to suit the need versus having to come back to the town every time to explain that one clause you gotta change, and one you have to change. I do not necessarily believe that this bylaw is actually useful. I believe a job description well posted and well-written suits the same purpose. It describes the intent and the need and the desire of what you want from a town administrator. It's very clear and cut, and it can't be changed except by majority of selectmen. Once it's written, it's approved, that's what it is. So I'm just suggesting that maybe this bylaw is not appropriate. There are also other references in here, such as the municipal center, parentheses, town hall. We actually have a building we call town hall that has absolutely no municipal services anymore. I think that's another typo that you would want to fix before you voted on this as a bylaw. I've got no further discussion.
Thank you. Any, uh, Ms. Enel?
Ms. Chumon, I, I've got a growl a little bit, I guess. Uh, but anyway, what I want to say, if my name does ring, you know, I'm in health position in Barry as town administrator for many years. And my authority was granted by a personnel bylaw which outlined most of what is in your bylaw right now. Unfortunately, in recent years, the former board of selectmen voted to rescind that bylaw, and then that town administrator thereafter did not have the same authority that I do. I leased the town hall, all, all the buildings. I have authority over the employees. I also gave permission for special events. My board trusted me, they trusted my judgment. So, your, your bylaw, including the yearly evaluations, was all in this personnel bylaw that we had voted, here's that. And it outlined, it outlined the steps to be taken for collective bargaining, for disciplining the employees, for interacting with different departments, and for the evaluations. So this is nothing new that they're trying to do. I didn't read it entirely, but I just came for it. It looks like exactly what was in place when I held the position as town administrator.
Thank you. Yes?
With the changeable December, I totally agree with Apple's selectmen burden about Section K to give the town administrator full jurisdiction over the rental and use of all town facilities. Or they want to rent, um, town hall, or some, there are nothing for something the town administrator uses, but of course, what you cover is of course a recourse. Also, it's a goal to select and improve the whole thing instead of select board.
I would entertain amendments if people wanted to fix these things. Uh, for example, someone may make an amendment to correct the words "board of selectmen" to instead be "select board," which is the correct term for that as voted by a town meeting a couple of years ago. Would anybody interested, be, be interested in making that amendment?
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend article fourteen to change the verbiage of board of selectmen to select board. So that that verbiage is consistent with our town term law.
Second.
I have a motion and a second of amendment. Um, any discussion of that amendment? All those in favor of that amendment? We're only voting on the amendment to see if we should use the right words here. Have all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Say nay. That carries unanimously. The motion is amended. Yes. If, if somebody wanted to make an amendment about this problematic section K, they could do that too.
I'd like to propose, I would change again, I'd like to propose another amendment, but stay striking out in section K, full jurisdiction, and insert, uh, something to be effective, they have recourse to board select of excuse me, here it goes. Board, select board in case the town administrator denies the permission for the rental.
Okay, um, an amendment needs to be very clearly ordered. So let me work with you. Okay, I think the amendment I heard you make is, um, in section K, strike the word full, and at the end of the first sentence, add the words in consultation with the select board.
I second that.
So that sentence would read, he, she shall have jurisdiction over the rental and use of all town facilities in consultation with the select board. Would you like to make that amendment?
I will amend, uh, section seventy dash two, section E, section K. By changing section K, take out the word full, and at the end of that sentence, add in consultation with the select board so that it shall read, he, she shall have jurisdiction over the rental and use of all town facilities in consultation with the select board.
I have a motion and a second for another amendment on section K. Any discussion of that amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. That amendment carries unanimously. Is there any more discussion of the original motion? Mr. Brophy?
Um, on, in the first part, I'd like to, um, under seventy dash two, how is it doing this? In, under N. Uh, under the guidance of board of selectmen, he or she be responsible for the negotiations of our contracts with town employees over wages, hours, and other conditions of employment. Absolutely, I can understand that. The town administrator may serve as a designee of the, of the board of selectmen for the purposes of the regional school, district collective bargaining negotiations. Um, that is, um, outside of the scope, um, of Everform of ninety-three. Um, in collecting, not only in regional, like, regional school committee language. Um, the school committee, district, school committee is an entity upon itself. And it does have collective bargaining, um, authority. And part of the Everform law of ninety-three gave municipalities and cities, town and regional districts, a representation, uh, for collective bargaining. So an example for us, for the Quogue Regional School District, when we have collective bargaining, the five towns, um, select board represent one member to sit on. So it's not, it's not just one battery. It could be Okeem, Visier, this, this time around is represented from the range. So this would be contrary to law and would not pertain to any regional perspective. Um, so that is something that has to be stricken. And my other part of the question is dealing with O, P, and R. Any reference to the regional school committee or district? We are not a department. I know people want us to think that, you know, we are, but it's a bona fide, elected, recognized committee in Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And it's established with rules and regulations. So it should not be mixed in. There should be strikeouts they're dealing with. Especially when you're talking about T. He or she shall be in charge of all technology and software, other than technology and software used for educational purposes purposes. By the regi-, that has nothing to do with, as such. That's would be my early interpretation.
That, that reads to me like they're exclusively.
Excluding, I, I hear that, but I don't think it should be any reference at all. That's my question that I was asking, on the legal perspective, I don't know. That it should, should there not be an exception and be completely taken out with the authority of the school?
We tried to make this clear that there would be no intrusion into the work of the Quogue Regional School District. And in our efforts to do that, Mr. Brosh has decided that we are trying to erase. So, um, I have no, I'm the last person to that. When, and, and the reason the town administrator may serve, we put that in because every time you need a selectman to do this, you never get anybody to do it. And so sometimes we, we just said that if may be the town administrator, we go and represent. Because you and I both know, I ended up on committees in the school district because the other fit, you know, the other select board members didn't have time to do it. And I always felt a little awkward, you know, because of my previous role. So we were trying to exclude in language so that we can know this interpretation. If however, you feel you would rather have it stricken, so some people would potentially, you know, be like a Niva and, you know, move into a stuff they shouldn't be in. I have no particular problem with that and I would support such amendment. But the, but the language that was here was an effort on our part to make it clear the intrusion was in a degree. Because understand, we get a town administrator which never worked in a regional school district. They pick up the phone and they, they live in the apartment.
If you had some language, Mark, would you?
So, um, um, yes.
Mr. Moderator, Jason Panto, Hudson Road. Um, seems like there's a lot of stuff that needs to be clarified and fixed in this particular article. I'd like to make a motion to table it so there's some time to talk to all the departments and everybody that needs to be talked to, to get everybody on the same page before they move forward with this.
There's a, can a motion, please, there's been a motion to table, motions to table are not, uh, debated. And they have to have a two-thirds vote in order to carry. If the motion to table passes, we're done and we move on to the next thing. If it fails, we can continue discussing this amended article and decide whether to pass it or not. So everyone understand what this motion to table means? Okay. All those in favor of the motion to table, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion to table, please say nay.
Nay.
Since it requires a two-thirds and that wasn't clear to me at all. Um, I'm going to need two tellers and I'm appointing these two department over here to be my tellers. So, um, I'm going to ask everybody who wants to table this motion to stand up, please. And I ask one of you to do one side or one of you to do the other side and we'll work that. Everybody opposed to tabling and if you want to keep talking about this, please stand. We have ninety-eight voting to table, we have, uh, fifteen voting against tabling. The motion is tabled, we move on to the next part. Article fifteen, this zoning article?
Good evening, everybody. Amended code of town Barry zoning bylaw. I move the town vote to amend the code of town Barry, chapter one forty, consulting, section one forty dash seven, residence districts. Subsection A five. By believing in subsection, in its entirety, inserting the following language in place there of, two family dwellings, with the exception that in a residence district, R twenty and R fifteen, the same must be serviced by tunnel water and sewer.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Since you've changed in the language, I think it'd be very helpful to people to explain what this does.
Basically, uh, right now, current zoning bylaw only allows for two-family residences in R eight. So that's pretty much anywhere in town. So this proposal is, in places where there are R twenty, you can also, providing you have sewer and water, you're able to do a two-family. And right now, if you do a two-family, and everywhere in Barry where it's R eight, this proposal is changing, so R twenties, you can't do a duplex right now. You would be able to do a duplex, providing you have water and sewer.
Okay. Any questions about this zoning article?
Well, I'm, I'm.
Wait, I'm sorry, can you, uh, I didn't, does anybody ask a question?
I was inquiring whether you have any pictures to show us what, what the words mean.
Thank you.
Basically, a duplex is just a two-family, okay? You can do it in a ranch style, okay? You choose, you, you can see a lot, but you don't have to buy areas where it's all one floor, okay? Uh, the other duplex, I would like to do, would be a town inside. Where you park in the back, you can drive, and you have two floors of living.
Are there any other questions about this zoning article? Let's see.
I just want to know how the, I just want to know how the planning board feels about this and what it may or may not affect in the town of Barry.
Thank you. Did the planning board fully hearing on this zoning article? And if so, how did you vote?
I think every county planning board, we did and we had favorable recommendation. So a little context, we have R fifteen, R twenty, R eighty, and those are based on density. And right now, in R eighty, you can do a one or two-family. That's your two acres, two hundred feet of frontage. With R fifteen, R twenty allows for higher density. And you can have a one-family or a three-plus. And for some reason, in the zoning, they never allowed for a two-family. So it seemed logical if you do a one plus, one-family, two-family, three-plus multi-density. So it seemed like it was a basic omission to not allow the two-family designation. So for example, with R fifteen, R twenty, are the areas surrounding the county or the other, uh, comments around there.
Thank you. Yes, Katie?
Cheryl Southwood, Wallwind Rowan, um, I was at that planning board meeting, so, um, I, I just feel like I have a lot to say about that, where they convinced a council, rather than one. Um, people who live in Barry are here because it's a small rural town. And they want to keep it that way. We don't want to be a city, we don't want to be, you know, a big town. If you are going to argue that we need more housing, you're going to bring in a lot of families, uh, who, these are rentals that will not, they don't pay taxes. But the current bylaws protect the town from growing too quickly, uh, so that it, it is burdensome to the taxpayers. And we're not just talking about schools. That's always a big thing right now, that's not a problem. But you're also, then if you grow a population, you're talking about lease, then you're talking about the cruisers, you're talking about fire department and equipment and so, everything that is going to be a burden to the taxpayers. Furthermore, it was made extremely clear at the planning board meeting that whatever, um, a builder or any builder gets up and says now that this is what they want to do, once we change these bylaws that were put in place to protect the taxpayers, once you do that, they're not bound by what they're saying. They can turn around and do whatever they want to, to put in a lot of people in a very small space. So I would say it, it really becomes a burden to the taxpayers and we need to think very carefully about, uh, how we're, we're affecting wealthy Barry. When you're having the current restrictions as to road footage and acreage, we're, we're seeing one family, homes walking, a private dwelling of taxpayers, and that's a whole lot different. Thank you.
Any other, you want to say something?
Yeah, I definitely don't want to be a taxpayer to town Barry. Okay. What we're doing is we're going from potential six units now that are, to only twelve units, tops. It's good location, it's close to the planning board, likes of the. It's good location, it's close to the planning board, likes of, of the town center, the high school, across from, uh, Stetson Home, across from the police department, um.
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna rein you in there.
Yep.
That's actually where we're debating right now. We're talking about changing R twenty and the areas you're describing are, yeah, R twenty. So, this is going to change the bylaw for R twenty to have two-family wherever that R twenty is.
Correct.
Yes. I think you can make that other case on the next one. Uh, any other comments about this bylaw? Yes?
June Freeman, O Cam Road. Seems like Article fifteen and Article sixteen go together, and if we don't pass fifteen, sixteen becomes moot.
And? I don't believe that's true. If that were true, I would have voted no.
One is, uh, changing the R twenty to allow for duplex anywhere that there is a R twenty existing. And anything over a duplex in an R twenty zone, you have to have a special permit. So it's only public areas, public endpoint.
Mr. Kelly?
Hopefully we can settle on our line. So, the one that we're voting on now is to allow additional use in that zone. That's allowing the two-family. Can I get on to the next one to clarify, cause people, no?
We're only talking about this article.
Okay, so that's all it is. The other one is entirely separate, but that's all we're voting on? And again, the, the pictures I've set around, we're not voting on the pictures. All we're voting on is should we allow for a two-family and an R fifteen, R twenty? How they decide to develop for another one?
Mr. Kelly?
This is Article fifteen, just to clarify, what this actually does is, uh, developer that owns a, a parcel that is in R twenty right now can build a single family or three, four, five, or six family. This actually allows him to say, you know what, I don't even want to. So it actually, when it comes to not overburdening the town, it gives a developer a better chance to say, if I do two, I make money, I don't need to do three. Otherwise, they're gonna do three, so they can make their money, and now you brought three families in instead of two. So in a way, this actually allows a developer to reduce the potential burden on the town compared to how the current regulations lay it out for them. No, I'm not even saying they're gonna, but they don't even have the option to do a two-family right now. Oh, it must be passed. So it's either gonna be a one or a multifamily that likely increases the burden on the town.
Yes, sir.
I just wanna reiterate what was talked about earlier, the schools, they're going down. Population lines are falling down. The line of schools in school are going down. Everybody thinks, oh, they wanna be like a rock. Rock went from, uh, six thousand to eight thousand over the last ten years. We've gone from fifty-seven hundred now. So it's, it's not like Berry's gonna be the next rock. And that's what I keep hearing from people. I just wanna let that be perfectly clear. That's not gonna happen.
Any other questions or comments on this article? We don't need that, there are no more comments. So this is the zoning article. Zoning articles have to be passed by two-thirds. All those in favor of amending the zoning by law as described, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
The motion carries, it has two thirds. That takes us to Article sixteen. Do I have a motion on Article sixteen, the second zoning by law?
Hi, I'm Paul Manfield, O Cam Road. Uh, I can hear you.
Sorry, I can't hear you. Any question on that?
Oh, sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Uh, I'm Paul Manfield, O Cam Road. Um, I have a motion to announce the ballot for this vote.
Um, okay, that's out of order right now. Give me a minute. We don't have a motion on the floor to have a secret ballot out yet. So, can I get a motion on Article sixteen?
Motion, sir, uh, to amend the code of town Berry zoning by law. I move town vote to amend the town Berry code, chapter one forty, town Berry zoning by law in zoning map incorporated there in high records by changing the zoning district of land on the north of suicide of South Street, consisting of land owned by Russo Construction Corp. As reported with the registered deeds in book six eight six seven zero eight one fifteen. And being a portion on accessories map fifty-one E and shown as a shaded area in the attached plan. One is currently designated as R eight, rural residence district to R twenty general residence district.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do you wanna make that motion that you made a second ago now?
Manfield, then, um, I want to vote for Article by secret ballot.
I have a motion for secret ballot. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of moving this by secret ballot, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
All those in favor of, uh, requiring a secret ballot on the motion that was made by Mr. Crusoe, please stand. That's right, twelve?
Ten percent.
Ten percent. At one, two. Thank you. You can sit down. Um, ten percent, so unless there's three hundred and fifty people in the room that carry it. Uh, it's not a majority thing. If we have a zoning by law, that ten percent of the people in the room can, uh, cause a secret ballot. So, we're gonna continue with our discussion when we're all done. We're not gonna vote yays and nays. Instead, we'll have secret ballots, there's a whole process for that, and we'll do that. But we're back to discussing, um, the motion that was made to amend the code of the town Berry zoning by law. Does anybody have a question about that?
Hi, Jesse Warren, O Cam Road. Um, I just had a point of order about the accessories map law number. Uh, so accessories map fifty-one E is not actually a valid designation. Uh, the votes go, we'll let her first and then the numbers, so if I find the parcels we're still gonna go.
Can we get a clarification? You really want this to be right?
Yeah. Uh, so yeah, the decision says fifty-one is supposed to be.
I entertain a friendly amendment to correct that. So that should have read E fifty-one, now fifty-one E. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Vivid, huh?
I challenge a motion for amended.
Um, I, I think, I think Vivid is just a typo. I think it's fine, we can consider that amended. Is there any other questions or discussion? I, I for one, don't see an attached shaded map and, in my book, and I don't know where this is. So I think it'd be very helpful that the, uh, audience of you tell us, yeah, where you're talking about.
Alright, everybody knows where the, um, area post office is on South Street, directly across from Stetson Home. There's a, a six that you can deal right in. That's gonna be the area that we are, should try and change this on. In fact, clarifying to people, I, I do have a map on the field, shaded area.
Make sure you save one of those for the town clerk, because that needs to be part of your motion. Before we do that, I wanna make sure that everybody knows what we're talking about. Is everybody clear, um, where that shaded area is? No, no problem with that? Okay, go ahead.
Uh, hi, I'm David Shepherd, Illinois chairman of the board. I'm scared about what is gonna happen if this gets sewn to R twenty. Uh, but what does it mean now that it's R eight? What are the restrictions now versus what it's gonna be after? If you just voted on what it can be now, in the future, is it a two, three, four, whatever it is? Uh, if you voted it as R twenty, what is happening? So, what's the change that gets actually changed for this?
Okay, the, um, the zoning by law, uh, in Berry establishes different zones, and in different zones, you can do different things.
Yeah.
It's currently R eighty, and R eighty allows some uses that are not allowed in R twenty. And you'd have to refer to the zoning by law to see those lists. They're fairly long. Okay, yeah, yes?
When it changes, I know in R eighty, someone said earlier, it's two acres, two hundred feet frontage. And I think the setbacks may differ also from R twenty. Or R fifteen, if it was changed to the R twenty, then, uh, buildings would not be, the buildings that would be prohibited in R eighty could now be built in, and R twenty as in, I imagine, um, one, two, three, or more units where I don't believe you could have, you can have that in units, um, in R eighty.
That's correct. That's correct. The R eighty has a significantly higher frontage requirement than R twenty, which means the distance along the road. So you can have narrower launch on an R twenty, and the setbacks are different, so you can have things closer to law. Yes? Miss Amy?
Just want to know the planning board's thoughts on this matter.
Planning board, do you have a hearing on this article? And if so, how did you vote?
Can I, uh, carry on with the board we did, if we're available? But the explanation is when looking for development in town Berry, it's more cost-effective to develop in the center where the infrastructure exists. There's plenty of development around Berry. You look, the, uh, the tax collector, that's their GIA estimate, who it has all the parcels. And standard development in Berry, the R eighty, is looking all the paint art, frontage, what it be. We have quite a bit of paint art, frontage developed. And it's all the back roads, costs a lot of money to get the busing, flowers in the winter. So the idea is if we center the infrastructure, allow greater density where the resources exist, it's more financially viable to do that. So from a planning point of view, it makes sense to put units housing where the resources exist. So it's close to the schools, it's close to the post office, police station. So based on that, we would have the favorable construction. Again, regardless of what he does, you have to focus on what we are voting for. Cause you, to vote on the offices, what you could possibly do there, strictly what we're voting on is changing an R eighty to an R twenty? R twenty. That's all. So any use that he could do in R eighty now, you know, would be transferred to any allowed use in R twenty.
Yes?
Is this just for this lot or the by, changing the by law for the whole town?
This, this by law changes the zoning map, so this area fifty-one E on the accessories map would be R twenty instead of R eight.
Okay, I still feel we're gonna crowd in more people than, than, it, it has to affect us taxes.
Any other questions or comments?
So again, um, how many units could potentially be put on this land?
Thank you. So the question is, after it gets changed to R twenty, how many units could be put on fifty-one E?
We haven't evaluated it, and we'll leave that to our job to engineer those parcels.
Um, can someone take a guess?
We'll offer six allowed units to have allowed. That's a definite six.
Is that ten units, um?
Five duplexes.
Five duplexes, so it's five houses, but with this change, if we just pass ten families?
There'll be ten units, so it could be duplex, five units.
Okay. Can, can, if you have a question, can you come up? I think it's confusing. So if somebody can clarify that, Mr. Erwin?
Commander, um, with the planning board, with the O Cam Road. Uh, just to clarify what this really does, just so that people understand, and this is where we're getting a little confused before. This allows him to build anything that's allowed in R twenty. There are multiple opportunities in R twenty based on the current bylaws as written. That includes up to the multifamily. What we have been told consistently today is the intent by this particular landowner was you just put in duplexes on those five potential parcels that he can split out of this lot. Um, but again, the, the, the bad U I U's, I had mentioned that if we pass this and then he passes away next month, and that man gets sold to someone else, and it's in R twenty, that someone else, when they come in and say, I'm gonna do something different with it. So they can put in apartment buildings that can be three, four, or five, depending on other criteria. And this is where I do believe that my colleague here, Floyd, mentioned the engineering involved in that, determining that, there's a lot more variables. So I'm just saying that there's more opportunity than necessarily what may be intended by this particular owner.
If you go past the ten, it has to be a special permit, public areas, and all of that, so. But you still have input on anything else that would go past that amount of units.
Any other question on this article to change this lot from R eighty to R twenty? Okay, I'm going to a vote now. So, how do we do that? Yes?
So if I can ask, um, Paula and Kay to come up. Basically, everybody, when you checked in, you were handed, um, instructions with two little paper ballots. One was yellow and one was white. We're gonna use the yellow ballot. And what we're gonna do is up here, if you see, there's two white boxes. And what we're going to do is up here, if you see, there's two white boxes. We're going to form two lines. And you're going to take your yellow yes, no slip. Tear off how you want to vote on the article, either yes or no. There's going to be a trash. Okay. So we're going to use these boxes as trash. So you're going to come up and you're going to discard the vote that you do not want. And you're going to place how you want to vote in the box for your line. That's basically it. Anyone have any questions? So you're going to take the good list. Tear off your vote. You're going to discard the part that you don't want to cast. And you're going to cast your other, the one that you do want to cast in the appropriate box. Your hand will be stamped and returned back to your seat. I'm going to do it in kind of a orderly fashion. We'll have this side here come up to the box on this side, and this side here come up and cast your votes on the other side. Once your hand, once you've cast your ballots, your hands can stand and just ask to return back to your seat. And then we'll actually maybe start with the finance committee table and these like board tables. And cast their votes.
So yes, things that you want to change the zoning, and without no need to only leave the zoning code.
So if you want to go there?
Go maybe sound a little bit.
There's a pay. And that's how it's done.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have counts. The votes in favor were 75, the votes against were 60. Because this requires two-thirds, the motion does not pass. We're moving on to Article 17.
Can we pass over Article 17?
There's a motion to take no action on Article 17. Do they have a second? I have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of passing over the article, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Moving on to Article 18, which will be a few pages later. Article 18.
Can we pass over Article 18?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to take no action on Article 18. Any discussion? All those in favor of taking no action on Article 18, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Thank you. Article 19. Replacement of the chiller at the middle high school. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator? I move the town to vote to authorize the sum of $387,344 to pay for the cost of replacing the chiller upon pulling the HVA system at the Quailwood Regional Middle High School. Including the payment of all costs associated related thereto. And to meet this appropriate proportion, the school district is authorized to borrow a set amount pursuant to Section 16D of the general laws in the district agreement. Section 6, page 8, as amended, pursuant to any other enabling authority. Such amount authorized to be borrowed by this vote shall be reduced to the extent of any grants received by the district on account of this project.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. I was a little confused because you used the word borrow at the end, but this is not a borrowing motion. This is a motion to raise an appropriate. Can you clarify?
Very, Mr. Moderator. So what this motion does is the town of Barry is not borrowing any money. The regional school district is borrowing the money. And so, under Massachusetts' general laws, when the regional school district committee votes to borrow money, each of the member districts has the opportunity to either approve or disapprove of that borrowing. So if the borrowing is approved, then your share of that borrowing would be added to your district assessment in future years. So you're not actually borrowing anything, you're just authorizing the district to borrow.
Thank you. Any questions on this motion? The gentleman in the hat?
Mike Paulier, I'm glad you shared the way this was written. I was wondering, is the $387 total cost, or that's just the very...
Can I get an answer to that question?
Yes, to answer that. The borrowing, what we're doing to replace the chiller, it is distributed over five towns, the member towns of the Public Regional School District. And then it's apportionment is beginning with a formula based on October 1st, and I believe it's on October 22. Am I correct on 22? And what the student enrollment is at the middle and high school on per community. Barry's assessment would be $154,424. Would be our cost to that apportionment for the total type of authority of the whole. So it's not the whole of 300, that's the cost. But it's distributed apportionment through all five towns based on the population of student enrollment as of October 1st, 2022. Should we change this from $387 to whatever you said, $140? Before to the attorney, but this is by our regulation, and we have to then do the full amount by the piece to borrow. Am I correct, sir? Mr. Moderator?
Very, Mr. Moderator. Right, so your role here is to either approve or disapprove of the total amount of the borrowing. If the borrowing is approved, it becomes a line item in the regional district budget. And then you pay your share through the district assessment as that is calculated each year. So this is just going to become a line item in the school district budget, and then it's going to be apportioned. But under the general laws, each of the towns has to just either vote this up or down.
Can I get clarification that we're actually not spending any Barry money right now?
That is correct.
Just one last question. So if this is going for, is this line item already in the budget for the school? So that's the act, the answer is going to be a 23 year, or is it an extra?
So the question is, when is this going to appear in the budget for the school?
Next year?
And it sounds like the answer is next year. Is there?
Can you clarify that this ends up showing up in the QRSD debt service line item? For next year's budget, you'll add to that or subtract depending on what clears out for prior debt? And can you also provide an estimate of that increase of that line item for next year?
Mr. Moderator, I ask, just to turn it off, if you're willing to come up and explain a little bit on the piece of the budget regarding the borrowing, but I'll give you.
The actual cost to the town Barry to pay the debt assessment would begin in F.25 on this item. The amount will depend on the term of the borrowing, the number of years, and the interest rate at the time that the towns decide whether they're going to borrow or not. Currently, our five communities, some of them have chosen to pay their portion of this chiller project upfront and for their, for us to borrow a lower amount reduced by the community. So it will be up to your community leaders to determine whether it's, if this is approved, whether it's better for the town to pay their portion of this debt over time, or whether they can afford to pay for it at the initial time of the debt, or that the cost of the project is incurred.
Thank you. The next is Mr. Inney.
Mr. Moderator, my question would be, has there been any research or discussion about the potential to repair or rebuild the current component, or say use apart to reduce costs? Or is the only option that I have, because again, we're talking about...
Let's go ahead and...
I was going to defer again to the superintendent, because it has been researched on this to be able to come to the school committee when we voted this last month.
The system has been repaired once already, and there is no guarantee that a second repair would last for any length of time. There's a good chance that if the repair, if it wasn't attempted to be repaired again, and the freon, the cost to recharge the freon in the system would be $25,000. And there will be no guarantee of that. Just the recharge would even take care of the problems because if the repair was not successful.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Natche, I just want a clarification. If each of the five towns has obtained a money, why are we authorizing a whole amount? Shouldn't we just be authorizing that share because if we vote to appropriate that, then not be legally obligated to have that money?
Yeah, the attorney clarified, this is not, we're not going to appropriate here. This is not getting the bottom line of our budget. This is a vote to authorize the school district to take an action that in the future will get our budget.
But it doesn't say that. It says the town, the town will do it for the cost of replacing that Quailwood. It does not say the Quailwood is going to borrow. It's like, what I mean, how did you vote?
Okay. Let me just ask our town council, is comfortable with the language of the motion, then it's correct? Our town council is comfortable with the language? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Douglas Martin, Sheldon Root. We're voting to appropriate the whole amount, as I understand this. If some of the other schools in the, or some of the other towns that are in our region vote no, then my question is, are we responsible for their portion of that?
Good question. Can I get an answer to that? I have a good answer, but not much.
Thank you for your, Mr. Moderator. So under the statute, the first step is for the school committee to authorize the borrowing. And then after that, each of our member towns, town meetings have an opportunity to either approve or disapprove of that borrowing. If any of the towns disapprove the borrowing, then the borrowing is null void, and it goes back to the school committee to either come up with another proposal or to let it go. So no, you are not then left with someone else in the air if they vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Inney.
I heard Lloyd and Phil wrote, I'd just like to clarify a little about the point that Mr. Inney was making. It's actually the verbiage in the article that is important. To see if the town will vote to appropriate, I suggest you say, to see if the town will vote to approve the regional district to appropriate. Because we are not appropriating any funds in this article. And the way it's written, it says we are appropriating all of the money for this purchase. So I suggest maybe somebody work with the attorney. We had a recommendation on a motion to get the wording appropriate.
Yeah, so this is one of those cases where I said that sometimes the words that people are saying are a little bit different than what's written in the, in the booklet. So the actual motion that made, that was made was that the town vote to authorize the sum of $387,344 to pay for the cost, to authorize. They didn't, so the original Warren article, yeah, said the wrong word. But the actual motion that's on the floor is not appropriation, it's an authorization. Does that help?
That's what I read.
So you're saying it's not the motion written in the...
Right, right. He said a different word when he made the motion. The thing that we're actually voting on here was a motion that said, I move the town to vote to authorize the sum of $387,344, and the rest is as it was. Mr. Wilson?
My name is Sam Wilson, I'm in Barry, in West Street. And saying this, just to lighten the water a little bit, and ask people this question, is that if this is approved, does the school promise us, the district of Barry, to be able to have town meetings in air-conditioned comfort? Because we have been, I have lived in town since 76. And I can remember being in this room, and all I see is this. We have given the school millions and millions and millions of dollars. And every year, it's always paid, and every year our taxes go up. So we're asking for a chiller, and we're asking for something called freon. So in other words, they're going to reduce the air conditioning. Can we get a commitment, maybe we should make a motion or something that says that if this is passed, we get to be in air-conditioned comfort at town meetings? Can someone help me craft this, perhaps?
So it's unfortunate under Massachusetts' general law statute, the Board of Selectmen has the sole discretion to decide where the town meeting takes place until that town meeting starts. The time the town meeting starts, the meeting can vote to adjourn to someplace else. But the actual location is chosen by the selectmen under statute, and the town would not have the authority to make that command of them, of the selectmen. So I would rule that motion out of order. Yes, sir?
Thank you.
Move the question.
Okay, I'll move the question from your seat. If you want to move a question, you need to be ready.
Due to the fact that $25,000 will potentially fix the issue and save the town $350,000 in the motion to table the issue until second meeting.
There's a motion to table. Is there a second? I'm going to need you to come up here. You just made a motion, so you got to sign some stuff. We have a motion to table, there's no discussion of a motion to table. A motion to table takes two-thirds. If two-thirds of the people vote yes, then we stop talking about this. All those in favor of tabling this motion... All those in favor of tabling this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
All those in favor, oh, let's do my hands. All those in favor of tabling the motion, please raise your hands. All those opposed to tabling, please raise your hands. Since the motion to table requires two-thirds and there's nowhere near two-thirds in favor, uh, that motion does not pass. We're going to continue talking. Mr. Moderator.
Can I make a motion to move the article to vote?
Yes, there's a motion to move the question, do I have a second? A motion to move the question, again, we don't debate that. If you vote yes, then the debate is over and we're going to move to a vote. If you say no, we'll keep on talking about this. So, all those in favor of moving the question, moving the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to moving the question, say nay. That carries unanimously, we're going to move on to a vote. Debate is ended. So, we are moving to a vote on Article nineteen, whether the town is, uh, authorizing the sum of three hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars to be spent on this chiller. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
The motion carries with the majority. That takes us, um, that takes us to Article twenty.
Not for yous, for him, just for him, I wrote.
Can you clarify?
Move the town to transfer the sum of fifteen thousand dollars for pre-cash and quiet re-credification of the town code.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. That was a little hard to hear coming from Peter. It was a motion to move fifteen thousand dollars in free cash to provide for re-credification of the town code. Any questions on this? Yes.
Just, I don't understand what that is, and I, and I'm sure it's we to do this, but I just wanted to get an explanation.
Can I ask the town clerk to pop over to this mic and tell us what re-credification of the town code is?
So basically, the town of Barry has what's called the Code of the Town of Barry. This is all of our rules, regulations, and bylaws, um, that we pass at town meeting. Um, and it's also available online in electronic format. We had this done many years ago, I can remember. But it's, um, we've, through town meetings, we've adopted new laws, we've changed laws. The state, um, has, um, created new regulations and laws that are sometimes inconsistent with what we do through bylaws. Um, so basically, over the years, there's been, um, and, and the code book basically puts everything together and it numbers it and it puts it into sections so we can easily look things up and find things. And, um, just the re-credification is, um, to have, to have the company come back and go through the book and to go through and check for any inconsistencies, make any changes, suggestions. We'll have a legal review, and then it'll come back, um, to town meeting, um, before a vote to accept. That's basically it.
Thank you.
And it just, it's a very important too, because especially with our zoning bylaws and stuff like that, because if our town code is outdated and we're publishing it online and we're, we're referencing certain things, and then we go back and we try to vote things or somebody from outside comes in, um, and it's not up to date, it could be going on, you know, facing their, our vote off of information that's no longer relevant.
Any other questions on Article twenty about re-credification? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The motion carries. We've dispensed with Articles twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three during the consent agenda, which takes us to Article twenty-four, to amend the council on aging bylaws. Do we have a motion?
I move the town vote to amend chapter four oh five, council on aging, section four B, of the food of the town of Barry. By the meaning of subsection against the battery, inserting the following language in place thereof, council members shall be appointed by the state.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this amendment to the council on aging bylaws? Yes, they have, they have.
Um, I have two questions, but the second one's probably for the next article. But why does the select board appoint the council on aging members wherein, for example, we vote for the library trustees? But why is, why is this different?
Do we have an answer for why some positions in town are appointed and some are elected?
Uh, certain boards and committees are elected based on different state laws, the town bylaws. Others are put together as, um, are appointed. Uh, this is one that has been appointed, that's something that could be changed without, uh, a separate act at a town meeting. So at this time, they are appointed, and this is just changing the, that of the university.
So the question is how they were appointed before, I think the real question here is, what are we deleting?
So, uh, the way it is written now that the select board can only appoint members to the council on aging that have been recommended by the council on aging, uh, this is just inconsistent with the other board and committee in town. So it's something that will try to create consistency.
Thank you. Any other questions on this article? Great. Uh, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor of making this change, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Article twenty-five, also on the council on aging, do I have a motion?
I move the town vote to amend the code of the town Barry by merging the council on aging boards of Barry and Harvard to one of the org comprised of four members from Barry and three members of Harvard, and to accomplish such merger to delete section four oh five dash three, location offices, of the town council on aging bylaw, and to delete subsection A of section four oh five dash four membership of the town's council on aging bylaw in its entirety, and insert the following language in place thereof. Section five, four oh five dash four membership. The council shall consist of seven members comprised, comprised of four residents of the town Barry and three residents of the town of Harvard.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Um, I have a question, because this is one of those not recommended that's pretty rare. Can the select board address why they are recommending this, this article?
We do not recommend the article because we feel merits further discussion and study. Um, merger of this sort of intergovernmental service agreement of sorts. We feel that our town councils should have a little more time with the town council of Harvard to sit and make sure that we're making the appropriate, um, motion and that we are taking the appropriate action. Since the town of Harvard, um, and the town of Barry have shared membership, but basically doing so, do only, Harvard pays an amount to Barry because we have a place for that to be and to have activities. But the town of Harvard, um, has had its own council on aging separately distinct. They want to bring the organization more closely aligned so that, um, they can cooperate in, in, I guess, more rigorous way and have, um, this as a permanent sort of, sort of situation. Uh, as, as a board of selectmen, we are saying, we, we wonder if just as simple, because we've had no real conversation, at least the selectman had with the selectman of the town of Harvard. So we really feel the need to just have further information and get further clarity so that we will bring this probably back to the citizens as we get more information.
Thank you. There's a question in the back.
Authorization, enter. Can I make a motion to table at that point, is it allowed?
That's an order.
Okay, I can make a motion to table, decision.
There's a motion to table, which has been set for you to come up and sign something to do that. Um, and we agree with the agreement. There's a motion to table and second, if, or I'll practice now, there's no discussion of this. It requires two-thirds. If this motion to table passes, we stop talking about this. All those in favor of the motion to table, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion to table, please say nay. The motion to table carries unanimously, we move on to the next article. Well, guess what? There is no next article, because the articles presented with twenty-six and twenty-seven are consented. I would, however, entertain a motion to dissolve the meeting.
No.
Do you have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries.